All right, it's 5:30 and we'll call our city meeting to order for Monday, April the first. Carl, roll call please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Luntzman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I need a motion to approve the last week's minutes, please.
Moved.
Second.
A motion Slate Hanson and second by Rux. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving the meeting, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. This is the appointed day for World Autism Month. Dr. Patterson had hoped to make it, but said he probably was not able to and not able to send someone, but that's all right. We'll all read it for him. Also noteworthy today, the state Capitol Rotunda in Pier has a system where they can turn it blue with their lights, and they did that today in recognition of the month for autism. Whereas autism spectrum disorders are a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors in speech and nonverbal communication. And whereas autism spectrum disorders affect at least one in 59 children and an unknown number of adults of all genders, races, ethnicities, economic backgrounds. And whereas early accurate diagnosis and intervention and support are vital to the well-being of those with the disorder, and whereas persons with an autism spectrum disorder should have access to the care, services, and opportunities they need, thus the city of Aberdeen is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Month and World Autism Awareness Day in the hope it will lead to more research and a better understanding and acceptance of the disorder. And we proclaim April here in Aberdeen and in Brown County, along with all the others, supporting this month as World Autism Day and Month. And again, thanks to Mr. Or Doctor, retired Dr. Patterson, for bringing us that. Under open forum, Aaron, you are signed up. I presume nobody else is. Is anybody else on the list there? Okay, so you have the floor.
All right, good afternoon, and thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the numbers from the 2-1-1 program. We have basically a full year's worth of numbers. And I'll just take a step back and remind everyone that we actually officially kicked this off about mid-February of 2018. So we have about 10 and a half months' worth of data here, but and reiterate that this is an information line, and you're really hearing quite a bit about 2-1-1 now with a lot of the flooding that's happening south of us. 2-1-1 really is leading a lot of the volunteer efforts. If you think of it as a big funnel, they're kind of the top of the funnel, and they're getting people to where they need to be for services, whether they want to, people want to volunteer, and they've been inundated with calls, so we've kind of left them alone to try to make sure that they're manning everything that they can down in Sioux Falls. But if you look at the front page here, you'll see that our goal for Brown County was to have 600 contacts. In the 10 and a half months, we had 687 phone calls and 72 text messages and 729 database searches and also resource downloads of 240. And so the Helpline Center creates online databases and quick research tools that you can download, a variety of different topics from basic needs to some of the other programs that they get frequently calls about, whether it be things from bedbugs all the way to helping with financial assistance for rent. And so those have been downloaded quite a bit. If you look at the pie chart, you can see a breakdown of the contact types, with the vast majority, 35% being referral, 24% being information, and then listening and support. The second page is where we really start to get into the data there. Of those contacts that have made, over 1,200 identified needs were reported, the highest of those being counseling, mental health assessment and treatment, housing, and then specialty medicine, dental appointment partnership. That's a little artificially high because that is a partnership between Delta Dental and the dental band that is brought in here, and they take the appointments and reservations for that particular program. And with that, we've seen a rise in the number of children that are using the program because of the ease it is to basically schedule those appointments. And so that's a great partnership between Avera, United Way, and now the Helpline Center as well. Of the identified needs that are out there, they did identify some unmet needs that were requested, and these are pretty similar to what is seen around the community or the various communities. Gas money, bus fare, automotive repair, just those kind of daily things that pop up where you may need a couple hundred bucks to fix whatever is going on with your vehicle, and just not a lot of those emergency resources always available for those type of, those issues. So, any questions with regards to this page?
Any surprises?
You know, we kind of thought this was how it was going to fall out. We saw it trending this way. And this is vastly different from most of the communities in the Midwest. Counseling, mental health services are kind of on the top of the list. The next page looks at crisis calls that come in, and in particular, looking at total suicide-related contacts. Of the 92 calls that came in that were directed at crisis, 79 directly identified suicide or suicide ideology. With that, they break those down into levels of threats, from one, having a plan, all the way to three is where they are starting to commit the act of harm. And then within those, the statewide, it's just a little over 2,300 calls that came in related directly to suicide. There has been some discussion on whether or not 2-1-1 becomes the ultimate referral source for suicide. And because they are not a statewide entity, they do not publicize themselves as being the suicide crisis line, because it's not accessible all across the state at this point. In the remainder of the calls, and if you look at the crises calls there, they break down where law enforcement needed to intervene. You'll see that in 85% of the times, they were able to circumvent a law enforcement well check. Seven of those times that they did call in for well checks, and so that saves on time and resources for our community as well. So, questions with regards to that? The last page there I included was just the program that Brown County Emergency Management recently put out as well. This again is a partnership with the Helpline Center, so the text-in option for Brown County Emergency Management for text alerts that come out from that particular organization. This is not the text alert that will alert you to tornado coming your way. It's the text that comes after the tornado and say where are resources, where's shelters at, where to find the resources after the emergency. And so as of last week, there was a little over 1,500 people have opted in for this text option. And so this was kind of just a bonus program of the Helpline Center. It's been obviously utilized extensively in other counties around the state at this point as well, obviously down in Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties and further south.
So they just, all you have to do is just send a text to 85511 and you'll get signed up?
Yeah, what do you have to say?
Alert Brown. Alert Brown to 85511.
Oh, we have to say alert Brown to your text messages. Thank you.
Yep, it's to 85511 and then Alert Brown, and then you just get signed up into the program. And you can opt into other counties if you would like as well. I don't have the listing of all the county, you know, because the messages come out from Emergency Management, so if you wanted to look in on Minnehaha or Lincoln, that's a possibility as well.
So after a year, any hurdles you didn't expect, any things that were not as good as you thought or better than you thought? What's your evaluation after one year looking back?
When you're looking back, I'd say I want to see this continue to grow. It's not as growing as fast as I'd like to, even though we said 600 would be a success for us. I think this will continue to grow. One of the benefits that will come out, and it looks like we will be able to get some state funds now for this, this was a big push in the legislature. And so it did go to the governor's desk. I haven't heard exactly where it all fell out, but it looks like about 50% match to this. So right now, our bill is about $30,000. That should come down to $15,000 if I understand it correctly. I'm waiting for the official word from the Helpline Center to basically disseminate that information. However, that's how the bill reads at this point, and it's not statewide yet, but the incentive for 2-1-1 is that they will, the state will help provide 50% of the funding for any counties that want to come on or any of them that are currently utilizing the program.
Any difficulty at all with the referral points in Brown County and their relationship with this?
Nothing's been identified to us that we've found out.
They're all enthusiastic about it, don't they?
Yeah, everybody seems to be hopeful. And, you know, from our little neck of the woods, hearing from more of the mental health side of things, they've said it's been a really positive program for them, and I'd like to thank our community partners on this. Part of the group that disseminates most of this information is DSS and also the library. We have a lot of cards, and we can't keep the 2-1-1 magnets at the library long enough, so people are getting their information at the library, believe it or not.
Anyone else? Any questions?
Sure. Aaron, promotional funds help with this cost to a tune of 15,000, I believe it is. So what do you see for this next year, excluding what maybe the state will kick in?
Obviously, I see that number going down. Again, I'd like to see kind of a three-quarters partnership on something like this, whether it be a county, city, and United Way. So that could boil out to five, five, and five. How those funds are distributed or allocated, we'll figure that out. So the requests will go down probably.
Anyone else? Thanks, thanks for your work. Appreciate it. Not that long since you first brought this to us to get this far, actually, for something like this. That's pretty quick.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business, an ordinance to rezone that we approved without objection last week.
Moved.
Motion Bunsonis and second by Johnson. Anything new, Ken? Questions or comments from the council? Roll call for final adoption, then please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Luntzman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, routine city business items A through E.
Moved.
Motion Ronain, second by Olson. Questions on any? All in favor of approving them, then say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Abstain.
With one abstention. Under new business, item A, Resolution 190401. Some firearms, a surplus, comes from you, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our, actually, we're doing this more than annually, it looks like. We're starting to pick up a little bit. Our property custodian at the police department, Dar Van Dover, is doing a phenomenal job of getting on top of some of these and starting to move, identify those firearms that cannot be returned for whatever reason, and putting them in the surplus listing that you see here in the resolution. Again, we would ask that the council approve that with the understanding that those surplus firearms will then be traded in for credit to the police department for other acquisitions.
Moved.
Second. Motion Ronain, second by Luntzman. Questions on this at all? If not, all in favor of declaring those as surplus, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item B, chief, you've worn out a couple more vehicles.
Yes.
Request to purchase two new ones.
That's correct. So we had budgeted for two SUV Chevy Tahoe patrol vehicles that are pursuit rated. We're purchasing those with a state bid price from Beck Motors who has the contract for these vehicles. Again, as you can see, they're a four-wheel drive vehicle and something that is highly useful given the winter that we just had. But again, we purchased this. The budget was approved for these, and we're just asking for authorization for these vehicles.
Moved. Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Rux. Questions, anyone on this? David?
What kind of equipment comes with these vehicles?
So the equipment that we asked for is a spotlight on the left driver's side. Basically, there's a spotlight that you can manipulate. You can turn light in different places. And then I believe we asked for a plug, a heater core plug, so in the event that we have to move out of the garage, we can plug those in. Everything else comes with the pursuit rated package. It comes with the enhanced suspension engine or transmission cooler and some different things that we can set electronics and cages in, but that's about it. The key fob are standard with the electronic locks. As far as any automatic Astro starts or anything like that, I don't think we have that associated with this.
Thank you. You got to the heart of my thought.
Right now, you have one of these vehicles in your fleet. Do you see you moving away from vehicles, like cars?
Well, it's nice to have a blended fleet. There's different thoughts behind it, you know. In Aberdeen, we have, we can count on six months of winter. So in my opinion, it's nice to have a vehicle that can provide, you know, coverage to the citizens in the city of Aberdeen at any time, given any weather. You saw a few years ago, we purchased Dodge Chargers sedans. We're hoping to get good gas mileage on that, but when we looked at those vehicles, that was a two-wheel drive vehicle. They moved in a generation that had all-wheel drive on those, but still, we don't get the clearance, in my opinion. And so the gas mileage, you know, it's kind of washed. So in my personal opinion, I like the Tahoe, the SUV package, because you can, any size officer can fit in that. You get more equipment, more and more all the time. We're putting more things in, whether it's safety equipment, barricades, cones, and we're just limited on space sometimes on the sedan, so that's a good question.
Yeah, and I've seen a lot of police departments start moving away from vehicles because of the requirements of equipment. There's just not enough places to put it in a car. So, and I'm fine, like I say, I mean, I think what you've done with the vehicles you have with the, you have the Veterans One, the truck, and then the other one, I think, has been very, very good.
Yeah, thank you. Bring up a good point. I mean, we use the vehicles to the point where they're not useful anymore, so we do use them up, and then ultimately, they go in surplus. But you'll see different generations. We're at the last stages of the Dodge Chargers. We had those decal, then a blue decal. We've moved to kind of a black and white, but you can readily identify their patrol cars. And again, I anticipate that we'll probably surplus three to four cars that are pretty much spent at the end of its life cycle.
Thank you.
Does that include the white one with the flat tire in the parking lot?
Do we have a flat tire one over there?
It was for a while.
Oh, okay. That might include that one as well.
So are you going to put lights back on these vehicles so we can identify police cars?
Yes, yes. There are a few vehicles that have lights that are, you know, non-visible sometimes, but most of them have, you know, the light that you can see on it. So, yeah, we've gone a long ways from the dome on top that you stick your arm out and set on top. So, yeah.
Are you worried, Dave, that you might not be able to see police cars?
I have my issues.
The motion is to approve the purchase from Beck Motors in Pier. Total amount $71,640. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of approving that, then say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item C, Carl, request to purchase computer service equipment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're requesting approval to purchase a recovery appliance unit. That's kind of fancy terminology for a backup system. And this unit will back up the various servers that we have. We have two or three servers, depending upon the needs. If there's a lot of data out there, Austin from the computer department did tell me that this is actually, we had budgeted $40,000 for this item, but because of a sale price and quick action on Austin's part, we were able to get this for under $26,000.
Moved, approved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, second by Bunsonis. Questions, anyone? It's a request for the purchase from Applied Engineering Technology, and the exact amount is $25,823. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item D is this, Robin, purchase of fuel for Public Works.
This is an annual thing. The state has a pretty good system worked out where we don't have to reinvent the wheel. This has basically the wholesale price that they're paying plus their markup for transportation. It's a pretty good system, the way it's set up. Things were volatile enough in the past, years ago, where basically we were going to break contractor or suppliers because the price of fuel just moved too much for them. And so they went to this system in order to protect both the suppliers and the public entities that were purchasing off this. So this year, we're looking at harms for the transport quantity, which is something more in that 8,000 gallon range. And Volan Oil Company, which would be more in that 500 to 3,000 gallon range, anything smaller than that 6,000 gallons. So they have both agreed to supply under that state contract, and we recommend approval.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Rux. Questions on this from anyone? All in favor of approving Robin's request, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item E, you have been provided a rather lengthy list of bills scheduled for payment. I would entertain a motion to pay those.
Second.
Motion Slate Hanson, second by Luntzman. Questions on any of them? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Luntzman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item F is approval of payroll from March 17 to 30, and city share of social security, old age, and survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life. Moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Olson. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Luntzman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Turn it over to Lynn for the city manager report. Lynn?
Thank you. I have two items this evening. The first item is city transportation director, Rich Croco, would like to inform the city council about the procedural process and need to use the airport's high-volume pump. You'll come forward. So like everybody else, we've got water that we don't need on our property. We have an agreement in place with the county commission that before, so let me back up a little bit. We've got four pumps. We've got two 750-gallon per minute pumps and a smaller wet well that pump over to the large pumping station.
Rich, can you get the mic on, please?
In, okay, in the large pumping station, we've got a 1,000-gallon per minute pump and a 5,000-gallon per minute pump. The 1,000-gallon per minute pump operates off of float switches, so it's, it can go on and off as needed. The way the airport underground piping system is designed, that's designed to hold about 20 million gallons of water. As that influx of water comes into the piping, it comes into the wet well, and the 1,000-gallon per minute pump takes care of that water level. As more and more water becomes, comes into that system, water will start backing up into the detention pond. So the detention pond is designed to hold 128 acre feet, which is about 41 million gallons of water. So we're at a point right now where we need to start the big pump, the 5,000-gallon per minute pump. The 5,000-gallon per minute pump in one hour will pump 330,000 gallons of water. There's a couple of ways to do this. One would be to turn the pump on and just let her buck. That's probably not going to happen. So as an alternate, I'd like to propose running the pump overnight during eight-hour shifts. When things cool down at night, there's less runoff throughout the county, and we can pump for eight hours. At eight hours, we pump 2,400,000 gallons of water. That water is discharged south of the wastewater treatment plant into the Moccasin Creek, and from there, it just follows its natural path. And really, the problem is not that I want to pump water just to pump water. With that great big giant deep wet well, or that big pond out there, that's an attractant for wildlife. So we're seeing flocks of four, five, 6,000 geese sitting on that water. And that detention pond sits between two runways. So when those geese get up, they go somewhere. So the guys have been out hazing. We've got some tools that we call bangers and screamers, and they do just as the name implies. They, one goes bang, one is like a Fourth of July firework with a report at the end. So that's really kind of it in a nutshell. I need to move some water for safety.
Well, this is a, this is an operational item, the permission for that, I guess if that's what you're asking for, would fall in Lynn's lap. But Lynn, I assume you would accept some advice from the council if people have comments they want to make?
Very much so, but within the procedural process, we also have to approach the county, and we'd hope to talk to them tomorrow morning. And you should also know, Rich, you told me, how many hours have been placed on the pump since 2014? The small pump, the 1,000-gallon per month, gallon per minute pump, we've got 2,430 hours on that pump since 2014, when it was new. The 5,000-gallon per month, there's a per minute pump, there are eight hours on that. And that was, about four hours of that was due to initial testing, and then just cycling it on and off for 20 to 30 minutes a year to exercise the pump.
Robin, you're the, oh, excuse me.
I thought it was important that you know that. So in effect, since 2014, we've never used a 5,000-gallon pump. And this will be the first time for need.
You're the drainage guy, Robin. Your thoughts?
Well, Rich's approach is very appropriate, trying to, trying to take those off-peak times where you're not going to be getting as much runoff. You know, there's going to be concerns anytime you have downstream landowners that are going to see this water rushing past, and if their water can't get in because we've forced some additional in. So I think doing it slow and easy and trying to just manage and maintain is probably the best approach, and make it work as best you can and keep an eye on your system.
I talked with Director Meitz today. I'm sorry to interrupt. I talked to Director Meitz to see, part of the contingency on this disagreement is that water cannot be discharged if there are, if there are any county roads that are experiencing water flooding over, co-washing over. I talked with Meitz today, and he said, "South county, there's no concern, yet."
Okay, I'd like to restate that. It says, "No roadways within the Moccasin Creek watershed, not in county." And so, just for the record, so everyone knows.
Bullet point number one on the bottom of the sheet.
Right. Questions, anyone?
So there would be no other concerns other than the downstream from the wastewater plant? Because that, you said that's where it's going.
That's where this.
We pipe it to that area.
Correct. This is all part of a wetlands mitigation and stormwater management project.
You know, from the standpoint in the community, you're downstream, it's just going to add more to the system that our main drainage runs into. So I like the approach just because he's going to allow the system to catch itself up, pump some, catch up, pump some, catch up. And that's what we're getting with the freeze thaw every day. Right now, you're getting melting during the day, and it's catching up at night. So it's, that's actually ideal.
Clint, you had your item.
Of course, right now, Foot Creek is running high. And so I'm guessing this probably comes in around the same area or just to the north of where Foot Creek and Moccasin Creek come together?
Very close.
Very close? Okay, so, because I do know sometimes when Foot Creek is running pretty high, again, our system backs up in town. Not that we're in terrible shape, but we're not that far from being at an action stage. we're not that far from being at an action stage. So, are there any concerns right now with adding more water to that system? Should all of a sudden, we get those days where there is no freeze thaw at night, where it stays above 32 degrees, so we're thawing all day?
I think that's why you want to try to do some now, and give them some relief at this point, before we do start getting into those days where we have warmer temperatures and less freezing at night. I think it's ideal to start it now rather than wait.
Okay.
I was curious if this high-volume pump operates manually or on a timer?
It would be manual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any best estimate of how many overnight eight-hour shifts would be required at this point?
Ideally, it would probably be close to seven or eight eight-hour shifts.
Okay. Dave?
So, the main concern is waterfall on this pond.
Correct.
And so, what level at this pond has to get to where the waterfall will not show up anymore?
If we can get it to, like, within probably 18 inches of the bottom of the pond, those geese are not going to hang around for that.
So how many inches is it above that at this point in time?
We're probably about eight feet above that. They've got a nice deep pond.
That's a lot of water that has to be moved out of there. Is that more, I mean, you made that calculation that, you know, that this is going to take that many days to get that down to that level?
Correct. Based on the 5,000 gallons per minute, 300,000 gallons an hour.
Yeah, do the math. It can be 2.4 million a shift.
Yeah, a shift, yeah. Correct.
Um, is there, since we're talking with the county, is that going to be evaluated daily by what's happening down?
As written in the agreement, it has to be not less than once for 24 hours. So, we would communicate that as often as needed.
So there'd be a full communication to determine if you have to skip a day for some reason, something's going on, and then reevaluate again the next day until you get to the water level you want?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, thanks. Good luck.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have one more item, Sid?
Yeah, yes. Within the city manager's report for April 1st, I also provided a copy of the 2018 and 2017 garbage and recycling reports from the engineering department. And I specifically put in the 2017 because I wanted to note within, for the report of 2017, when you looked at the income and expense report for 2017, it showed a deficit of $778. Going into 2018 now, the income and expense report shows a deficit of $38,601. So, at the end of the year, there'll probably be a recommendation coming from me to ask for a garbage rate increase for the year 2020 to offset this deficit account.
Okay.
Question on that. So, the deficit increased because of what?
Wages, gas, supplies, it's just normal operation expense. There was nothing unique that put 2018 different than 2017.
We, what's the history with the landfill fees?
For a period of about six-year, oh, landfill fees? Excuse me, I thought you were talking about our rates. There was a period of time where we kept our rates at the same rate for six-year period.
The cost of taking garbage out to the landfill.
I do not have that data available with me. I'd have to go back and solicit it for you.
They were, they were very similar between 17 and 18. That was not, that was not a...
A factor.
A factor in why the cost went up.
How about before that period of time?
You know, they raised their rates a little bit periodically, but it's not, that's not a significant portion of the operation.
Okay. You think more, Lynn?
No.
I have a couple items. On the April 8th agenda, they will request, or we, Lynn will request a motion to ratify the performance appraisals for the city manager, finance officer, and city attorney. And council members may review the performance appraisals at the city human resources office between now and then. In anticipation of that motion, contact Jill, and she'll set you up. The other thing, I've been asked to pass along, the collection sites for relief for the Pine Ridge flood problems. And they need basically everything that you would typically understand that people would need in a flood situation. And that's Good Shepherd Lutheran and the Red Rooster, if you have some stuff you want to help them all with. Anything from anybody else before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Ronan, second by Bunsonas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.